I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Holes.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is absent today. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've made. We thank you for allowing us to gather here, to assemble here freely. We thank you for the freedom that we have in this country. And God, we just pray for wisdom today for this council with the decisions they have to make. Thank you for the mayor and his administration. And God, as a city, we just ask that we'll put our differences aside and that we'll join together to remember who we are and why we're here. And God, we thank you so much for giving your son, Jesus, the greatest sacrifice of all. We give you all the praise and glory and ask your blessings on this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin our council meeting with an update from Emergency Management, and I'd like to also, before she gets started, to thank the EMA especially for coming and for sending representatives to come to give us an opportunity to hear the updates that are happening and just to keep us on our Ps and Qs. But we want to thank you very much. I had said that at the end of May that we would not have any more updates, but I'll say this: If something comes up and something happens, please feel free to come or we'll call you. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank y'all so much for having us and letting us be able to share in this format. It was not only informative to you, but it started a lot of citizen conversation, and we appreciate that opportunity. I want to give you a few numbers, and then I want to talk about some events and some changes in scheduling and events. So it's going to be just a lot to pack in in just a couple minutes. Right now, our all-time number of cases is currently at 13,954, and unfortunately, our deaths are at 357. Our current seven-day average is five new cases and one death. So that is excellent news. We are happy that the numbers are down. We are sad that we've lost yet another one of our citizens, and we're wishing well those that had the five cases in the last seven days. Starting today, at the Edwah County Health Department, they are doing the second dose of those that received their first dose at Carver Community Center last month. So we want to encourage everybody, if you got your first dose at Carver Community Center last month, today's the day. You can go and get your vaccine until 3:30 today for your second dose. Then after that, starting next week, the Health Department will only give first and second doses on Thursdays from 8:30 to 3:30. And the reason that they've gone to one day is that takes more staffing if they plan to do vaccine clinics during the day. The numbers that have come in for vaccines have not called for as much staffing as it should, so they're going to make adjustments and be cost-effective and mindful. If individuals will call and make an appointment, that's great, but they are not requiring an appointment on Thursdays from 8:30 to 3:30. We currently have 25,148 people who are fully vaccinated within Edwah County. That number is much lower than we would like, and we know that is because, I'm going to say it again, because the Alabama Department of Public Health could not service our needs when our demand was high. And due to that fact, the numbers, the who didn't get vaccinated are high. When you wait a certain amount of time for a vaccine, you become complacent then after you've gone another month without getting COVID, and the numbers are going down. So it was really detrimental in our goal that we wanted to reach of the 52,000 citizens to get vaccinated when we couldn't get what we needed from the Alabama Department of Public Health. That is in no means a negative remark on any of their employees. We house a lot of their employees right here in Edwah County, and they're wonderful people, and they've worked tirelessly beside everyone to make sure that things are addressed to our citizens' needs. And we just want to make note once again that we're still going to send in after-action comments to the Department of Public Health on how did that breakdown happen. And in speaking of sending comments in, we have scheduled this Thursday the second mid-action review at the Emergency Operations Center from 9 until noon, and that's for elected officials, not just City of Gaston, but all elected officials. A couple of our fire and law enforcement that missed the previous meeting, and that meeting is so that we can gather information from the beginning of this event. What went wrong? What went right? What did we learn? What can we build on? What do we need to remove? Are we going to be able to address the health recovery, our economic recovery, the standard of living recovery? I have an entire list that the government recovery. But to make an accurate and correct report that we can present to state and state present to our federal partners, we're going to have to have your input. There's no voting at this meeting. The only conversation is discussions about COVID and how we can grow from what we learned. Then we have several locations other than our Health Department that are now currently still giving vaccines throughout Edwah County. And I want to call out these partners because they have been a big player in helping where public health couldn't actually step in and do it, and we just want to recognize them, but remind citizens that they can still go to these locations and receive their vaccines. And that's Winn-Dixie, all of our CVS pharmacies, all of our Walgreens pharmacies, both Walmarts, Publix, Southside Pharmacy, Edwah Internal Medicine, Super B, Gadsden City Pharmacy, Jerry's Pharmacy, Hughes Pharmacy, Rick's Pharmacy, and Anderson Pharmacy. They've all been huge partners in helping to get our citizens vaccinated, and we really, really appreciate them. Our schools, we have reports this week that Gadsden City Schools and Edwah County Schools both report less than five cases within the entire school systems. Atala City Schools report zero cases within the last seven days. So we can obviously see where some of our five cases came from, from our school systems. The next conference call, we've moved those to monthly. Those are for first responders and elected officials to give updates such as this, will be June the 16th at 11:00 a.m. You'll once again get that text or email reminder to join the call, so just put that date on your calendar, June 16th at 11:00. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Madam President.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Two things. I've gotten calls, obviously, the seniors in this community have some questions about when they'll be allowed to gather again in closed spaces.
Gotcha.
That's something that has been a very popular question. And the other thing is public drinking fountains. A lot of runners and cyclists downtown that utilize the water fountains at Miranda Park and the train station or the hubs here. Any idea when that, is that part of a state order, or is that something?
That's not part of a state order. That's local.
Okay.
So that's a decision that can be made locally. With the numbers being as low as they are, I think we can safely begin to do some of those gatherings, but for those senior adults, if they are not vaccinated.
Right.
We do not encourage gathering, not even in small groups. So once again, get vaccinated so that you can safely meet together.
Thank you. I'll follow up internally. I just didn't know if there was a state.
Okay.
Mayor, you had a question?
I just wondered, are you going to put that on Facebook, all the locations and all that? Do you do that?
Yeah, we can do that. We can send out another one. It's been a while since we've done that, so we will. We'll update it. Mm-hmm. All right. Once again, thank you for updating us each week.
Hey, I got one question before you leave.
Yes, sir.
And I hate to even ask you this: Are we looking at any incentives to get people, because what, are we at 27%, 28% in federal county, to get them to take the vaccine?
Well, you know, as a local government entity, we cannot do that. But, you know, Department of Public Health may could work with a partner to do that. Other partners like the pharmacies, they may could offer their own incentives for individuals to come and be vaccinated, but that, there's not been a discussion here that I'm aware of.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Catherine, can you talk about the booster shots?
Well, actually, the last information we got on the booster shots was not to expect a decision until late August, at which time we'll begin to start pushing to get those vaccines back in here so that we can do the boosters on those. So we're waiting till the end of August to find out the timeline, if it's eight months or 12 months, six months. Most of us will surpass the six-month mark before we get the information on whether or not we should have the booster. So we're just waiting for that.
But we will get our fair share of the boosters here?
I can't actually say that. I know that we'll request our fair share.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you again.
We'll continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held on May 18th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of May 14 through the 20th.
So moved. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We had a special presentation, but it wasn't on the agenda. Tavis Smiley said in his book, The Covenant, without question, that education is the key to progress and prosperity in the United States. He also said that education starts at home, then the neighborhood, and then the community. So I first want to congratulate the parents of the young people that we're going to honor today because you've worked harder than they did to get them to this milestone. And one of the favorite books that I like to read at this time is by Dr. Seuss, and it's The Places That You'll Go. And Dr. Seuss says, "Congratulations, today is your day. You're off to great places. You're off in a way." He says, "You have brains in your head and you have feet in your shoes, and you can go wherever you choose. You can make your own choices, and you know what you know. So you today will decide where you go." So at this time, I first like to call Xyla Scott. Xyla Scott is a student at Adams Elementary School, and she won the Ben Carson Award. I had a write-up, but I believe you received $1,000 for that award. It's the highest award, and she had to do a lot of things to receive that award. So on behalf of the mayor and the city council, we'd like to present this to you and recognize you as one of our aspiring students in the City of Gaston. I know how to pronounce Akinsanya. First name?
Iday.
Huh? Iday. Iday, would you come forward, please? It came to my attention and others' attentions that you're going to be accepted to Columbia University. That is an honor. Everybody doesn't get into Columbia University. So on behalf of the mayor, city council, and the City of Gaston, we just want to recognize you and let you know that we appreciate you as an aspiring students and come back and practice law. Maybe you can get Mr. Roberts' job. We'd like for Taylor Simmons to come forward, please. Taylor Simmons is special. She's special to me. I know she's special to her parents, but can you believe that I was her principal in elementary school, and she has gone all the way through the University of Alabama, and she graduated May 7th from law school. Let you know that we appreciate you, and you're in position to get Mr. Roberts' job. And so we just want to congratulate you and wish you well on your journey. And we'd like to have Claire Anna Claire Tomlin to come forward, please. This young lady has done great things, and I'm going to put on my other eyes. From the City of Gaston, Alabama, whereas the National Merit Scholar Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955, high school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, which serves at its initial screen of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year, as well as meeting published program and entry and participation requirements, whereas approximately 6,000 semifinalists were selected across the nation, representing less than 1% of all U.S. high school seniors with the highest PSA score in each state. And whereas one finalist in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program was selected from the Gaston City High Schools, Anna Claire Tomlin. And therefore, the mayor and the city council of Gaston, Alabama hereby joins in recognizing Anna Claire Tomlin for her many accomplishments and her dedication in expressing appreciation to all those who have given their support to her endeavoring by proclaiming May the 18th, 2021, as Anna Claire Tomlin Day in the City of Gaston. We wish Claire the very best as she pursue her college education and express our hope for success in her future. This is approved the 25th day of May. Sherman Guyton, Mayor Cynthia Toles, Council President, and attested by Ivana Nelson. This one is to be, this is to be presented to the school, and this is your certificate. And today, I also learned that Claire has been selected as the valedictorian. So we want to say on behalf of the City of Gaston, and the mayor has been said, we appreciate you all for coming. We thank the parents for bringing you all, and just our way of letting you know that we care about you and we want you to be successful in whatever you do. Thank you.
Let me get a picture of all of y'all. Y'all come. Hey, y'all, Dr. Toles, if you can step back a little bit. All right, can we go count of three? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank the parents for coming and joining. Thank you.
Great. Good job.
So that everyone would know, I didn't take the proclamations away from the mayor. This was a special presentation. It just wasn't put on the program. So Mayor, is there any proclamations?
Come now, do this.
We'll continue with our agenda. Unfinished business. We have a resolution here assessing losing abatement lien against property for demolition for $3,991.40 on properties at 1423 Alabama Avenue in District 3, and this is the State of Alabama with possible rights of redemption by Brenda Giles, Roberto Diaz being the last known owners, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on April the 20th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Moved to adopt. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
On this next item, it is a resolution to assess our nuisance abatement lien against properties for demolition at $2,441.40 on properties at 1107 Hurst Street in District 3. But at this time, we're asking to table this resolution until further information is gotten, especially from the owners. But this is the redemption of the estate of Henretta Mall and Pentecost Temple, C-O-G-I-C, being the last known owners. So do I have a motion to table this resolution?
Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Is there a specific length of time?
30 days.
30 days. Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 10 through 14, which we made, we voted and agreed to put them together, but I'll read all of them. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition. Two are in favor of resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property, and we have five locations. And I'm going to call out the information for all five of these, and anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. This is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens at 1501 Alabama Avenue in District 3. This is the estate of Virginia L. Shaq, heirs is Chris John Shaq and Jennifer Shaq, Latrice Wilson in the state of Alabama, at $3,691.40. We have a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 1420 Kyle Avenue in District 3, and this is Van D Stevens and Mavis Turner at $2,666.40. In District 6, we have an abatement lien on 3 North 28th Street, Jesse Marie Baron at $3,891.40. We have a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 3419 Sudie Avenue in District 6, Ulyssis Cromer and his or her heirs, if deceased, in Holly Denson Leatherwood at We have a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens at 2517 Lookout Avenue, and this is an accessory building in District 7, state of Alabama, right of redemption of Christopher Croft and Lisa Croft, and this is at $4,691.40. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Is there anyone speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five resolutions.
Item 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3453 for the City of Gaston Landscape Maintenance. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Copland Skate Incorporated, and the amount is $75,240. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing amended economic development agreement with Los Arcros Properties for the location of a La Cross Mexican restaurant at 401 West Megan Boulevard. And this is to extend the opening date from 12 months to 24 months after the execution of the original agreement. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the application to the fiscal year 2022 Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program. Funding will be used to construct Phase 1 of a planned site improvement project in the downtown area. The total amount for the project is $621,000, with the city's 20% share being $124,200,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading, adopting a fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget totaling $1,062,570. The program will run from June 1st to 2021 to May 31st, 2022, and this ordinance has been presented for the first reading, and the council will vote on it the next week. New business.
Do you want this with the vote?
No. At this time, I would like to present Dr. Murphy, if she will come forward. Dr. Murphy is the new president. She's not new now, but I wanted her to come so that she could introduce herself to the community. Dr. Murphy is the president of Gaston State Community College.
Thank you so much, Ms. Toles, and to the council and to the mayor. Thank you all so much. To the audience, I am delighted to be at Gaston State. What a lovely community this is. What a terrific college. I wanted to see if that young man wanted to pass on Columbia and maybe come over to Gaston State. I'll give him a full ride. And, but how proud I am of those young people and their successes, and they are why we do what we do every day, and so excited for them and for all the places that they will go in their lives. And so I just want to thank you for allowing me to serve as your president. Please know that we're offering six hours to any of our high school students who have graduated in our service area, free. So if you know of a student that might want to come this summer and get six hours of education, we would love to get them on our campus and to serve them. I believe in servant leadership. We are trying to find all the ways that we can serve not only the Gaston State students, but how do we serve this community at large? And I want to just thank the council and let you know that I am here to work alongside of you, to support you, appreciate the ways that you have already and continue to support our college. And again, it's my honor to just come beside you and serve in whatever ways I can. And Mayor, thank you for the opportunity of meeting with you a couple of times, and Mr. Frankie and I have been able to have a few conversations, met with several of you when you came to our campus at Valley Street. It is our only historically black college and university that we have at Gaston State, and we're proud of that campus, and we were proud to highlight that and had a chance to meet several of you there. So thank you. If I can serve in some way or come alongside you in some way, please advise me how we do that. We're all about our community and our college. Thank you, Ms. Toles, for the opportunity.
And Dr. Murphy. And Dr. Murphy, Mrs. Shirley Corvin, who is the dean of science, who is retiring, she gave me an opportunity Wednesday, and we went through the entire building, science building. It is one of the most beautiful buildings that we have in the city.
Yes.
In fact, I told her, you would think that you were on a university campus. Has a lot, a lot of things in there. And so, very proud of Gaston State, and especially that science building is awesome.
Well, we are so proud of that building. If you have not had an opportunity to see it, I'd love to give you a personal tour and walk you through that. We are very proud of it. As the person who was a candidate for this position, I'll tell you, that building excited me. As I came 759 and saw that facility, it is just a remarkable space for us to have. And by the way, we're excited about the opportunity for perhaps advanced manufacturing and some other buildings. We're also excited that while buildings have a historical meaning to us, there are some buildings that have outlived their usefulness on our campus. Many of our buildings, 1925, 27, 28, I looked at the history of our buildings the other day, and we have some buildings that have served us well. But the period of their efficiency has outlived themselves, and so, we're looking forward to removing some of those buildings and coming up out of the ground with other facilities that will serve our community well and serve our citizens and prepare them for next steps on their journey for career and their education. So, thank you. We're proud of that building.
All right, and thank you very again for coming.
Dr. Murphy, I had an occasion to speak with Mayor Frank Bracato of Hoover.
Yes.
At the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Meeting in Huntsville recently, and he looked at my name tag. He said, "Gaston." And I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "I'm mad at you." And it was because you were at Hoover City Schools and have come to Gaston, and he bragged on you for about, we walked back to the hotel together, about five minutes.
Yes.
So, you are loved and missed in Hoover, but boy, it is our game, so we're glad that you're here.
You are kind, Mr. Back. Thank you. What a lovely friend Mayor Bracata is to me. So, thank you for that.
Right. He spoke very highly of you, so it's wonderful.
Well, we appreciate the support you're giving us as you're sitting down at the table with us frequently and having some conversations too. Thank you, Mr. Back.
Sure. Glad to do it. Thank you.
I'll read this now, and then I'll read it again, because last time, we had a lot of mix-up about holidays, trash pickup. Due to the Memorial Day holiday next Monday, garbage routes will be collected on Tuesday, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and Thursday and Friday's route will not change. So, at this time, we'll have more.
Can I make one announcement on Memorial Day?
Yes.
Okay. Gaston State Patrol Patriots Association is holding the Memorial Day program at the War Memorial in Nakalila Falls. Just two or three things. The national anthem will be sung by Sylvia Coleman. Posture of Colors is Gaston City High School as is usual. Our speaker is Colonel Joe Creel. I know a lot of people know him. 21-gun salute from the sheriff's office, the Bagpipes by Cecil Noel. It's going to be a great, great celebration. So, we invite everybody to come.
Okay. Did you want to start with you, or did you, any comments?
I believe that ate me up.
All right. Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Just trying to explain some stuff that we kind of buzzed through here, just so y'all know. The, one of the things we did was the Alternative Set-Aside Program for the transportation budget. Believe it or not, that doesn't mean that it's an alternative plan. It means that it allows us to utilize federal dollars to create alternative transportation routes. So, the way we're utilizing that money is to replace sidewalks and to make them ADA compliant. And one of the big places that Heath, the city engineer, is focused on with this program is in and around the post office and Doggett Towers and Johnson's downtown. For any of you guys who spend any time downtown, I guarantee you, you have had to dodge a senior citizen in a motorized scooter coming from Johnson's to Doggett Towers because there's no sidewalks through there. They're actually out in the street making those commutes back and forth to get their groceries or to go to the post office. So, these funds will be used to help alleviate that and create a safer environment for everybody. The other thing, y'all see us, the last few weeks, we've knocked off a whole bunch of nuisance abatements. We're not just out there mad at the community over this. You got to realize that for a year of COVID, we didn't actually take action on a lot of this stuff. So, we're playing catch-up with a lot of files that have stacked up over a while. Other thing I want to say is thank you to everyone at Striplin Elementary School. I got to spend some time with them last week as part of their Super Citizens program with their kindergarten and first graders. And man, let me tell you something. If you ever get disappointed, or you get down on yourself, or you're not thinking very good thoughts about the state of this community, make arrangements to go walk into an elementary school and spend a few minutes with a bunch of kindergarten and first graders. I promise you, it will reinvigorate you. It'll clear your head. It'll get you excited to keep pushing forward and trying to make this city a better place. So, thank you for all the staff over there. They're amazing. On a little bit of a sad note, I had the unfortunate experience of being pulled into what was a terrible accident in downtown over the weekend involving a couple of individuals. And I just want to say thank you to the first responders and the police department, the paramedics. It was unbelievable. You know, a lot of times you read articles about how these things happen. You get secondhand accounts of how these things happen and how people perform. But to be actually in the middle of something by coincidence, and to be able to observe these people working under a tremendous pressure in a very stressful situation, gives me even more respect for what they do. So, thank you. You all know who you are for that. And the last thing, there is an awesome program that our friend Eric Wright, who is now with the Alabama Extension Office forwarded me. This is a program that is designed for seniors who have income restrictions so that they can actually access local farmers markets. So, this is a senior farmers market nutrition program. Basically, what it is, is if you qualify financially and you're over the age of 60 years old, you can go to FMA.Aleabama.gov, okay? And that's the Farmers Market Authority of Alabama. Go to FMA.Aleabama.gov. You can sign up. If you're over 60 years old, they'll actually give you vouchers that you can take to your local farmers markets. You can buy fresh produce, fresh vegetables, fresh fruits, anything that's available there at the farmers' market. And the farmers at those farmers markets will accept these vouchers as payment, and then they'll submit them back to the state for reimbursement. So, if you know anybody who's over the age of 60, who has certain, you can find out the actual income requirements on the website if you go there. But it's an online form. You can click on it. Takes about five minutes to fill it out, and your seniors can actually get free fruits and vegetables from the local farmers market. So, they have some concerns that they may not have enough people sign up to keep the problem, the program going. So, please, if you have somebody that could qualify for this, sign up for it, because it could mean that thousands of other seniors in Alabama get to keep this program going. So, that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Before, Ms. Nelson?
Councilman Williams is absent today, but he texted me and asked me to read this on his behalf. It says, "Thanks to each and everyone who has prayed or offered well wishes during this very difficult period. As an only child with both parents overcoming health issues, I cannot begin to convey how helpful all of the support has been. Every message, every phone call, and every visit has been a blessing. I love you all, and may God continue to bless each of you." Councilman Deborah Williams.
A lot of people did not know, but his mother, his mother has been in intensive care, and his father is going through, going through an issue, a very serious health issue. So, he has both parents that are ill. Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to recognize the Westbrook Christian State Championship Baseball Team. Recently, they beat a longtime nemesis. G.W. Long has won 16 state baseball titles and had, I think, beat Westbrook probably three times, maybe over the last eight years or so. But those guys really dug in and played some great baseball. What's interesting to note is that their star player, who has signed a scholarship with LSU, which is one of the preeminent baseball colleges in the country, had an arm problem, and so, he wasn't available for most of their series. And their number four pitcher, I think, actually started the third and deciding game, and I think pitched a complete game. What I come away with, and what I get from that is, what a, what a great team. They didn't let the injury of their star player detract from their mission and from their goal. So, just a great congratulations to that, to that group, group of students and players and families that have poured a lot of their time and effort into being a championship baseball program. They have long competed very well in baseball on a state level and brought home their first state championship. So, congratulations, Coach Kennedy and Westbrook Christian School. That's all I have.
Mayor, you have anything?
Yes, I guess I might have a few words about the injury plant. I know on Facebook, it's signed, sealed, delivered, and all that. That's all a lie. It's all hype. We've never signed nothing with them. We don't have a contract with them. We've never done anything, except they were sent up here by the governor's office to see if we could work with them. But there's nothing been signed, sealed, delivered, and not even negotiating as far as I know right now. So, that's the facts.
Councilman Worthy?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
All right.
But other than tell people to be safe. It's getting hot. It's summertime. Watch your surroundings and drink plenty of fluids. Thank you.
I'll wait a few seconds. You might think of something else. I'm kidding. I'm kidding, you Councilman Worthy. I don't want any of your constituents calling you about me. One more time. Due to the Memorial Day holiday, next Monday's garbage route will be collected on Tuesday, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. Thursday and Friday's route will not change. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.